I'd like to call the June 13, 2013 meeting of Williamsburg City Council to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dootson.
Here.
Mr. Ponce.
Here.
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 Our first order of business today are council minutes for the meetings of May 6th and May 9th, and special meetings of May 15th and May 29th. Do I have any additions or corrections?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the city council approve the meeting minutes for May 6th and May 9th, and the special meeting minutes for May 15th and May 29th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Dootson.
Aye.
Mr. Ponce.
Aye.
Ms. Dootson.
Aye.
Aye.
Our next agenda item is a matter of special privilege, and today we're pleased to present the Williamsburg Business Appreciation Award for 2013. This is sponsored by the Williamsburg Economic Development Authority, and this year's winner is Sal's By Victor. Victor, if you would meet me at the podium here, and let's do it this way. Let me say a few things, then we'll make our deal and give you a chance to say something. Sal's By Victor, owner Victor, has offered his expertise in traditional Italian cuisine for over 28 years. Williamsburg residents have long enjoyed the high-quality food by Sal's at Sal's By Victor, but they might not know that Victor proudly handpicks specialty oils, cheeses, wines, and other ingredients from his suppliers, sometimes traveling to Italy to do so. Because of a devastating fire at the restaurant in 2009, Sal's By Victor has rebuilt, has had to rebuild itself physically and recover during an economic downturn, but has done this spectacularly. The restaurant now has remodeled its space, and today continues to draw regulars and visitors alike by cultivating local customer loyalty and actively working to give tourists a reason to come back. Sal's By Victor is regularly voted best of Williamsburg by the Virginia Gazette and can claim many positive reviews by other outlets. Moreover, according to word of mouth, Sal's By Victor is one of our community's foremost restaurants. In addition to running his fine restaurant, Victor is a great contributor to community-oriented projects and has provided unsolicited support, such as when he donated food to the Williamsburg Gallery crawl. He has also demonstrated environmental sensitivity, making substantial expenditures to outfit his restaurant with energy-efficient lighting, taking excellent care of the exterior of his building, his business is building, and advocating for improvements to the Williamsburg Shopping Center. Thank you, Victor, for bringing your gifts to Williamsburg and sharing them wholeheartedly. Thank you.[213.34][213.34](applause) I hope it's for you, and I hope you will display it proudly at your casual.
And I want to say thank you, everybody. Thank you to see the Williamsburg, and thank you for support Sal's By Victor, and with honor, I take this privilege to have this beautiful gift, and I want to say thank you for the future, too. Hopefully, we can make a better Williamsburg for everybody, not just for, for our children, for our tourists, for everybody. We'll make a better city, a better town, and the way it's been hospitality for so many years, I hope for the years to come, but I want to appreciate it. I do everything I can on my part. Thank you.[268.33][268.33](applause) I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good day, too. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next agenda item are public hearings. Been on council, what, almost 14 years now? This may be a record for public hearings in one meeting. We have four today. The first is a hearing, a public hearing dealing with the 2013 Comprehensive Plan implementation for the midtown planning area, and these are proposed ordinances 13-19 through 13-22. Reed?
This is our third round of implementation cases for the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, and as the mayor mentioned, this is for the midtown planning area. This shows our future land use map to orient you. This is Monticello Avenue, Richmond Road, and Lafayette Street, and this is an aerial photograph of the midtown planning area, the Williamsburg Shopping Center, Monticello Shopping Center, again, Monticello Avenue and Richmond Road. The plan recommends a package of changes to the text of the B3 district, which is outlined in blue here, the majority of the midtown planning area. The plan sees this area as suitable for urban mixed-use development and redevelopment with opportunities for higher-density housing, including housing for students and seniors. So a number of specific changes are being recommended to the B3 district. First is to change the name to the B3 Urban Business District to represent what the plan sees as existing and future character of the district. Remove automobile-oriented uses, service stations, and motor vehicle service establishments, drug and alcohol treatment centers, farmers markets, and newspaper printing and publishing facilities as permitted and special use permit uses. We amended the B2 district, add in newspaper publishings because we changed the zoning for the Virginia Gazette from B3 to B2, so we've done some other things in the plan that tie in with these changes to the permitted uses. The third change is to add senior housing and student dwellings with a four-person occupancy limit as special use permit uses. All residential uses, and the only others in this district is multifamily, will require a special use permit. The maximum residential floor area remains at 67% of the floor area on an individual lot, and we're also proposing to add microbrewery, micro distillery, micro winery, and micro cidery. We wanted to cover all the bases, and this has also been added to the B2 district, and as I've mentioned earlier, we've had numerous inquiries over the past year about these uses, so we thought this would be a good time to add them as a special use permit. Allow additional residential density above the base density of 14 dwelling units per net acre with a special use permit, and the proposed ordinances said that council shall consider the quality of the building and site design of the proposed development and how the scale and character of the development relates to the surrounding commercial areas when making a decision. And this is the same way we retreated residential density in the B1, LB1, and B2 districts, so this is, this is consistent in what we have been doing. The next area is the planned development urban district. The plan designates one area in the midtown planning area as urban residential land use, and that's the area along Mount Vernon Avenue where you have the Lawson Apartments. You also have the Housing Authority Sylvia Brown Apartment Complex and the City Loft Student Housing Project that is already zoned PDU. This contains, this area contains one of the city's four major concentrations of multifamily housing. So several things are being proposed here to implement the plan. We're revising the statement of intent, limiting rezoning to planned development urban district only on land designated as urban residential land use in the comprehensive plan, and that's the area you see outlined in blue. And thirdly, we're allowing residential density to be determined as part of the rezoning process. Since nothing in the PDU is allowed by right, you have to file for a specific rezoning. This essentially works like the B3 district would work, where you could get a special use permit for increased density. So those are the changes pertaining to the planned development urban area, and this, again, is an aerial photograph showing the location of Lawson Apartments, City Lofts, and the Sylvia Brown Apartments. The next area is the LB2 Limited Business District. This is part of the city's arts district. We're not proposing any zoning changes, but one minor use change, and here it is on an aerial photograph. The plan says that a variety of residential uses, single-family duplexes, townhouses, and multifamily should be allowed with a base density of eight units in that acre and up to 14 with a special use permit. We now allow everything except townhouses, so this, the change adds in townhouses as a special use permit use in the LB2 district. The next changes are only rezoning in this batch of changes, and what is being proposed is to rezone four lots from RS2 to RS3 because they are right next to the area of RS3 zoning to the left on this map between With and the Chesapeake Bank and all the side streets. So this makes the zoning for the small houses in this area consistent. Here you can see how those houses are located, and that completes the package of zoning changes for the midtown planning area. Planning Commission held a public hearing on these last month and unanimously recommended to council that these changes be approved. I would be glad to answer any questions you have now or at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Reed. Are there any questions for staff at this point?
Just one, please. Mr. Nestor, in the section where it references to remove automobile-oriented uses, and in parentheses, service stations and other motor vehicle service establishments, that reads to me as though it does not impact retail outlets that provide automobile parts or equipment.
No, that's a retail store, and it also does not impact a convenience store like Kim's that exists on the corner, because convenience stores with gas pumps still are permitted use.
So it would purely be a gas station, service station with no convenience store?
Right.
I can appreciate that, and yet, at the same time, I worry a little bit that we have so few service stations and gas stations in the city limits, that limiting those even further, this causes me a little bit of concern. So I can appreciate it here, but I'd just like to express my opinion at this point that it not be something we look at expanding anywhere else in the city, because I think we can, for the convenience of the residents, and certainly for the guests who travel here, the greater access they have to service stations, the better. So that's my comment.
Andy Hill. Thank you, Reed. If not, I'll, at this point, open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this issue, which is the Comprehensive Plan Implementation for Midtown Planning Area, to please come forward if you wish to speak. And please come forward, state your name and address. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Any further points?
You know, we've talked about these changes, and this is one section of the many changes that we will be implementing from the Comprehensive Plan through the zoning process, and I think we've covered them exhaustively, exhaustingly and exhaustively, and I think they're all really wonderful opportunities for us to do some things that can potentially make a real difference in the redevelopment of our community in consideration of the character and the aesthetic that we want to maintain, and incorporating it particularly in this area, the right mix of commercial and residential uses that, if executed eventually, and it will take quite some time before a lot of these things are implemented to any significant degree, but once that happens, I think it has the potential to really take much greater advantage of an important intersection in the city and in the region, and something that would serve the city very well. So I want to just take this opportunity, again, to thank Reed and the Planning Commission and the planning staff and all the others that have been involved in this process.
Thank you. Scott?
I want to say that, you know, this area has a huge amount of potential, and these parameters allow for, you know, smart, reasonable achievement of that potential, so, as Paul said, it's been thoroughly discussed.
Yeah, many meetings of Planning Commission, even City Council, much less for us, but again, to repeat kind of what they're saying, to me, this is, you know, some of these buildings have been there for 50 years. I think what we're doing is we're setting up a flexible land use planning for the next 50 years, you know, and to Councilman Fryling's point, it's going to take some time still. Lots of things have to come in order to find developers, you know, traffic, and there has to be a justification for people to make investments, but this helps set the framework for that to happen, so. It's good.
Yeah, I certainly agree with that, and Reed, I hope you will, again, convey to Planning Commission and all the staff people and others who have been involved in this process. I think this comprehensive planning process is, and this is only one part of it, as I know, but certainly has been exemplary, and I think Planning Commission has done a superb job in critically thinking about the needs and putting together land use plans that make sense for the city's future, so I hope you'll convey that to them as well. Thank you very much. With that, I'll- Can we ask Mr. Phillips about the voting? Okay.
Can we do these as a group, or should-
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, I move that council adopt proposed ordinance 13-19 to revise the text of the B3 General Business District, to restructure the district as the B3 Urban Business District. Proposed ordinance 13-20 to revise the text of the PDU Planned Development Urban District to allow residential density to be determined as a part of the rezoning process. Proposed ordinance 13-21 to revise the text of the LB2 Limited Business Neighborhood District to add townhouses as a special use permit use, and proposed ordinance 13-22 to rezone 715 through 721 Lafayette Street from RS2 to RS3. Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Again, Reed, thank you, and please thank the Planning Commission for a job well done. Our next public hearing is the Virginia Enterprise Zone application. This is proposed resolution 13-10. Michelle, would you like to-
If I may, just before Michelle starts, I'd like to disclose that I do own real estate and a business in the Enterprise Zone, and, but I should still be able to participate and transact fairly and objectively in this matter.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of city council. I will note before I forget that my colleagues from York County and James City County are due to arrive in a show of support. We've all gone, but I believe they didn't think we would get through four planning public hearings this quickly, so I think it's a compliment to us that we did, but you'll be at an advantage of mine. You may see them enter the room, and I'll introduce them if that happens. So today, I'm here to talk about an opportunity for us to participate in the Virginia Enterprise Zone program, which is a state program run out of Richmond through the Department of Housing and Community Development. So what I'll do in my presentation is talk about what that program is, and what our strategy for applying is, and why we're doing it regionally, and then talk about the physical areas we've identified in the city that, to propose, to put into this program, and then the local tax incentives that we're proposing, and then finally, I'll talk about next steps of the application process. So the program, as I mentioned, is a state program run out of Richmond. It's had several variations throughout the year, the years. The most recent revamping was in 2005. Full disclosure, I used to run this program, I ran all the economic development programs at the state for a while, and this was one that I ran, but it was under the prior legislation, not the 2005 legislation, so it has changed a bit since then. Part of that change was the state used to have 57 zones, or the General Assembly said the state could have 57 zones. That has been reduced to 30, and it was already a highly competitive process to receive a zone from the state. Localities have, all desire it, and it's very hard to get, so now, you can imagine that it's almost been reduced in half. It's even a little bit harder. So for this reason, this is part of the reason we're going in regionally. They do look much more favorably at regional zones versus individual localities. Some of the gist of the program, it is a partnership between the state and local governments to attract and expand businesses, and also to attract commercial, private commercial investment into a locality. And there is the state, state part of it is two incentive programs that they offer to activities that happen in the zone. One is called a real property investment grant, and depending on how much you invest in your capital improvements, that grant can be between $100,000 and $200,000, so it's a hefty grant from the state to invest in these areas. And the second is a job creation grant, and in that, you must create four jobs, and then four full-time jobs, and then starting with that fifth job, you can be eligible for a $500 to $800 grant per job, depending on what the wage is and what the type of industry it is. I will say, for us, retail and hospitality jobs are not included in this grant, so this would be part of our diversification strategy, looking for other type of jobs here. And then the other part of the partnership is that the local government must also provide incentives, tax incentives, as part of the partnership. So, and one other thing I'll point out is that enterprise zones, like many economic development incentives, and there's a lot of debate around the country about economic development incentives now, and I think that there'll be quite a bit in our gubernatorial election coming up this fall, but they are a marketing tool. They're very meaningful to the businesses, but at the very high level, a lot of businesses and site consultant selections are just looking for a checklist of who to hone in closer, and often enterprise zones is on that list, so to even get through their first blush of criteria to take you seriously, to really look at you, they're looking for an enterprise zone, so there is that marketing element to the enterprise zone program. So now to our strategy. As I've mentioned, it's a highly competitive process, so regional zones receive bonus points. You can imagine why the state is doing that. They're limited in their number of zones, so this can spread the program a little wider, but also, it makes sense in many regions and subregions like ours to cooperate when you can, when it makes sense on economic development. So we're applying with James City County and York County to strengthen the application, to get those bonus points, but also, there was a staff capacity issue. It's a very onerous application process, and so with the three offices being able to go in together, we were able to help each other get through that process. And lastly, I'll mention, James City County has had a zone for many years, and their zone is about to expire, so they have that experience of working with the program, but they also need to address that expiration of the zone, so it made sense for us to work together at this time. And lastly, under that category of our strategy, with our regional incubator having a revenue sharing component, that ranks us even higher in the regional competition. We look more favorable to the state that we've taken that effort on another economic development initiative. And you'll see in the zone maps, since the incubator is currently located in James City County, they drew their zone so that the incubator would be in it and help us with that application process. But now I'll hone in to sort of what we're proposing for the city itself. So the state says the city, that any city, may designate up to three areas of their city as zones, but it has to be between 160 and 640 acres when you add all the zones together. One zone, since we're doing a regional application, one zone must touch the other localities that are part of a regional zone, and then, so the two zones we're looking at are two areas that the city, through its Comprehensive Plan, its goals and initiatives, and also the economic development plan, two areas you're very familiar with that we've targeted for redevelopment, which are the Northeast Triangle Capital Quarter area and the midtown area, which you saw several maps from Reed a few minutes ago about the midtown area. And those are the acreages for you. We're about 250 for Northeast Triangle and 86 acres for midtown. Leaves us in that range, also allows us to, in the future, if we need to add area or delete area, we're still in a good part of that range where that's, we're able to do So to hone in on those areas, the Northeast Triangle here, it's kind of a general map to show you what part of the city that's located in. It's the Second Street, Capital Landing, Merrimack Trail area of the city. Here's the actual map. So what we've done is taken the, because we didn't want to use acreage on property that couldn't be redeveloped for commercial use, so we've picked up the commercial property in this area, and I'll sort of walk through it. It starts up at the beaches, which is not zoned commercial yet, but the Comprehensive Plan talks about that could be a commercial mixed use up there, and comes on down Capital Landing Road, crosses the Colonial Parkway, includes Second Street Peniman, then crosses the railroad tracks, and includes the commercial property along York Street, down to where we join James City County, right here on York Streets, so the Basset Hotel, York Drive Steakhouse is right there. So this is where we join James City County in the zone, and then at Second Street is where we join York County in their zone that's part of the regional zone. Midtown, as I said, Reed has some lovely maps that you've just seen for this area, so you're very familiar with it in the audience as well. This is the shaded area. Again, it's pulling out the commercial zone property in that area, so it's the commercial property that's part of the arts district. It's also the shopping center, Staples, Monticello Shopping Centers, on up to the Princess Anne Motor Court and the Whitley's Peanuts and all that vacant area along the railroad tracks there. So that's the midtown zone. And then I thought you might, it's hard to see, and I apologize, but I thought you might want to see the big overall picture of what the three localities together are proposing. So James City County has a zone up here in Stonehouse Industrial Park. York County has a zone here near Great Wolf Lodge, and then down across from the hospital, down Moretown Road to their industrial park there. This is our midtown zone. James City County, one of their zones includes where the Fresh Market used to be located, and also where Williamsburg Crossing Shopping Center is located, and that's kind of a theme in all our zones, is our older shopping centers that are ripe for redevelopment. This is a zone where they cut through some right-of-way and attach the incubator to it as well, so we'd have that safely in our application. Here's the regional zone. I've talked about the city portion. The York County portion goes out Merrimack Trail. James City comes down Route 60, includes McClaus Circle. The York County part includes the shopping center at Kings Mill, and then the York, or the James City part goes on down to the Grove area where they have some industrial property. And lastly, York County, they have two industrial parks off of Route 17 in this part of the county, and they've included that as one of their zones. So that's kind of the big picture. So local incentives. So as I've mentioned, the state offers some pretty good incentives to projects in these areas, but they do require that the local government also step up and partner to offer incentives. So one thing we did when designing the incentives was make sure that they are only about new tax revenue. It holds all existing tax revenue whole, so there's no loss of anything currently being collected. So one way to say that is we're giving up a portion of new revenue that we don't collect currently in order to entice that revenue to the city. So we have three proposed incentives that we need city council's approval for, and those are the real property tax incentive, a B-Pole fee, this is your business professional and occupational license fee, and a business personal property tax incentive. Both of these mirror very similarly what James City and York County are also offering, and they're pretty standard incentives that localities offer. They're easy to understand. They're taxes that are applied to all businesses, so they're things that are pretty common for an enterprise zone application to include. for an enterprise zone application to include. For the real property tax incentive, we put some criteria, we're suggesting we put some criteria on a project that you'd need to be investing at least half a million dollars in capital improvements to even access the city's incentive here. And again, it would only be a portion of the new revenue the city would collect on a project. And it would be over a five-year period. It'd be a little less to the business each of those five years. And you can calculate it two ways, and we had a discussion, a long discussion at a couple EDA meetings about this. So when the city's looking at it, we're really looking at what percentage of our new revenue are we foregoing? Are we giving back to that business? And that's this top chart. So that's the proposed grant based on a percentage of the new taxes that the business will be paying. And you can see in that chart, we've mirrored exactly what James City County has done. And because of tax rates being different, York County did not go through strenuous calculation. They just kind of copied what James City was based on the bottom chart. And I can get more into this if you'd like to, but it may put everyone to sleep. But the second chart kind of explains where I'm going here. So the business really looks at that grant as what percentage of my investment is that grant? So if I'm investing a million dollars in the city, what percentage of my investment am I getting back in that grant? So it's just a different way to look at the exact same grant. So this chart shows it from that perspective, and because the tax rates are different across the localities, these numbers are slightly different. You can see in Williamsburg, in year one, we're talking about an investment over $500,000, getting .33% of its investment back as the grant. And then, in that top chart, that means they get 58% of the taxes they pay on that investment back. See some heads nodding. So there's two other incentives we're asking for city council to approve. One is to waive improvement fees with, these are building permits, zoning permit fees that an applicant comes in. These are really, when you talk to prospects, this is a really, really nice incentive because this is an upfront cost. This is before they're starting to collect revenue on the project, and it's very meaningful, and it's very, they can understand it. It makes a lot of sense. And then, the other incentive is the business personal property tax grant. And here, we're mirroring exactly what James City and York County are doing to, again, this is all new tax revenue that this business would bring in. The first year, they would get .5% of that back on a declining scale, down to .1% back that last year on the $350 per hundred dollars they pay on their personal property for the And now, to wrap up the timeline for this process, the applications are due June 28th, so we are finalizing that application. And the James City County and York County elected officials, the boards of supervisors have already acted on this. Their schedule just fell ahead of our city's schedule to do so, so they've already approved this. We're asking James City County, we need to pick one locality to be the lead, to submit the application, and then to manage the paperwork for the program. James City County has agreed to do that since it's been doing an enterprise zone for many years. It's familiar with that process. All that means is if we are successful, and my office will be calculating these incentives for businesses, we will just, James City will be a pass-through for that information to go to the state. They'll just put it all in a nice package and send it up. And then, if we do win the award, and again, our odds are not, they're probably 50/50, so I don't want to mislead anyone that this is a sure thing, but we think this is the best year we have a shot to get it, given what's going on with the program. If we do receive the designation, it would become effective January 1st, and we would, after we learn about being designated, we would work with city council on the specific ordinance that outlines those incentives that I mentioned to you.
Michelle, thank you very much. That's a very, very good presentation and quite exciting. Now, again, I want to come back to council for questions, with two quick questions. Again, both James City and York have already approved.
Yes.
Approved this, right?
Yes, they have.
So they're just waiting for us to do it, to go forward. One question on the investment. Is that only new investment, or does that include investment in new businesses, or does that include investment that would upgrade an existing business? Would they be available?
It's also available to existing, existing businesses are, it's available as well.
There are many possible other incentives. If this were approved, we could, is it possible to add incentives once the program's in place if we decided to do so?
Definitely. It is possible to add incentives. It is not possible to remove incentives.
Move, yes, okay.
But it is possible if, as we move and are working with prospects, or maybe our strategy gets tweaked a little bit, we certainly can add to the incentives for either zone.
Okay, great, thank you. Paul, you're our liaison to EDA, so you may...
Ask questions?
Ask questions, or whatever.
Michelle, you used the number of 30 such zones in the Commonwealth. That's not 30 granted each year, that's 30 total.
Total.
So, once a zone is designated, what's the term of that zone?
The term is 10 years, assuming you use the program. So there is, you can lose a zone sooner than 10 years if you don't use it, if you don't have any businesses who use the incentives. But after 10 years, there's two five-year, it can be extended to 20, to a total of 20 years at two five-year periods.
And then, at the conclusion of the 20-year period, the zone ceases to exist?
Right, exactly.
So that means there certainly aren't 30 coming up this year?
Right. I believe there are four openings, and they're only due to expirations because there are more zones than available. There aren't any vacant zones out there. So I believe, and if Telly has arrived, he can correct me, I don't see him. I believe there are four openings, and we don't know for sure who's applying because it's somewhat of a secrecy competitive game, but it looks like at least 10 applications will be submitted for those four zones.
So your optimism is fairly high at 50/50 with...
It's that regional bonus points that I give us, a little better than 40% odds.
And in the state benefits that are offered, or the grants, you talked about the money for the jobs, the $500 to $800, once you get to the fifth job in a non-tourism business. Does that tourism category have any impact on the real property investment?
No.
So that's any kind of...
Any business.
Commercial construction that happens in the zone?
Yes.
And that's a pretty big number. How is that determined?
It is determined, it's based on, those are the caps of the number. So they, it's 20% of whatever your capital investment was capped at $100,000 if you only invest. So if you invest up to $5 million, your cap's $100,000. Wait, it might be $1 million. I don't want to misspeak. If you're less than a $5 million capital investment, you're capped at $100,000, so I did have that correct. But it's based on 20% of your investment. And then, if you're higher than $5 million investment, the cap then hits you at the $200,000 grant, but it's also based on 20% of your investment.
So if you invest $1 million, 10% of that's still $100,000?
Right, so they've...
So, I mean, you will get the same benefit in investing one versus 4.5?
Exactly, exactly.
On that $1 million investment, that is a huge, huge benefit. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, Scott, any questions?
How did y'all come to this $500,000 investment to qualify?
Sure. So plagiarism is flattery. We copied James City County. They had initially started at a million, when they started their zone many years ago, they had a million-dollar cap, and they found that it just wasn't being used. So they have adjusted it since then to a $500,000 cap. And that feels like, when you look at the percentage in actual dollars that you'll get back, they become so small below that investment that the paperwork is probably onerous at that point.
Gotcha.
Doug?
Thank you. Going back to the mayor's question about new, if it's not a new business, but one that's investing significant dollars, how do you determine what portion of that sales gets the rebate on B-Pole tax?
It's based on, so the year before you enter the program, that would be your base year, it would be any B-Pole or business property tax above that.
Gotcha. And then, also, piggybacking local incentives with other state incentives. And for example, there's the gap financing program that was put through the General Assembly. Could this program be tied into, or piggybacked with that program if somebody had the right project?
Yes, it could. And you'd be able to access both of them to their fullest amount. They don't, they don't create a cap on each other. They're two separate programs, and you could use both of them for a private project.
And I think I missed, but is James City County one of the four that was expiring this year?
They are not expiring until next year.
Okay.
So that's part of the strategy to do it. They think next year's going to be harder than this year.
It's a good strategy, thank you.
Michelle, these incentives are very like the ones in the Arts District. Is that more or less the same? And are all three jurisdictions have all the same incentives, like the improvement fee waiver? Is that...
We have, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. We're fairly comparable, but I can go through that for you. So we all have the real property tax incentive that I talked about. In that slide, I actually showed you the different percentages. We're all doing the business property tax at the exact same ratios. York County did not do improvement fees, but it's a, that's the one area where they're not doing it, but they did offer two other programs that we're not offering, I think a $20,000 cash facade grant and a, another, they added a rehabilitation grant. So it's kind of, it's not, it's a little bit apples and oranges when it comes to the improvement fee waiver.
And that's not going to be a problem?
No, that will not. They've assured us that that will not.
Okay. I just, I'm planning to vote for this. I think it's a really good thing, and I think we should do it. I am a little leery of incentives that go too far, because all over the country, and in fact, in James City County, we have seen businesses that come because of incentives and go away when the incentives go away. And so I think you can get way too carried away with this kind of thing sometime, but this seems to me like a reasonable sort of thing to do, so, thank you. Michelle, thank you very much.
Sure.
With that, I will open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to the Virginia enterprise zone application, please come forward. If you wish to speak, please state your name and address. Not seeing anyone. I will close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
I always get to go first.
The joy of being vice mayor.
There's a lot to like about this opportunity. The regional cooperation component of it is something that I feel like we can't emphasize too much. We constantly hear folks concerned about Williamsburg and James City County and York County fighting for the same businesses, or poaching each other's businesses. And I think examples like the cooperative effort now on the regional incubator and this application, even though we have no guarantee of being designated as an economic opportunity zone, just working together to benefit the region is, it's very encouraging, and I think something we should embrace, and we ought to take every opportunity to thank our colleagues in each of the counties for their participation in this. The one component of it that gives me a little bit of pause is the real estate tax rebate question. Michelle, would you mind putting the slide back up? And just begin that, let me just share the old adage. When it comes to income tax, the bad news is I had to pay a whole lot of taxes this year. The good news is I had to pay a whole lot of taxes this year, because you wouldn't have to pay those taxes if you didn't make the money. This is the same kind of situation. The city won't have to pay large rebates unless we're collecting large amounts of tax revenue on the front side that we're not already collecting today. It's on a decelerating scale that ends after five years. So the first year is the biggest year of rebate, obviously, as we've seen with the Arts District. And then, it descends second, third, fourth, and fifth. But what the city or either county gets in the long term is multiple years, probably decades, of contribution to the tax base. And Ms. Newson, I take your point about businesses that come to an area when they get large incentives. The numbers that we're talking about here are not huge from the city's standpoint. Now, when you accumulate them, yeah, in the aggregate, they can be large. But to somebody who's starting out a business, it can make a real difference about what kind of investment they can make upfront in the business to do it the right way. And if you use the example of, pardon my math here, but if we start with a million-dollar investment and we look at year one, right now, the city's tax rate would be about $5,700 on that million dollars. If you go to the county, James City County, it's about $7,700. So you've got a $2,000 difference in that, the tax rate. If we go with it as it's currently recommended, the city's tax rate in that first year on the million would drop to 2,400, and the counties would drop to 3,200. And so, the difference between the two is now $800. Now, there's still that same proportion of the rate, but the competitive advantage that the city has in the lower tax rate gets diminished as we reduce those numbers. And if we went as James City and York County did with the straight $4,500 per million in investment, it would make the city 1,200 versus the 3,200 and keep that same $2,000 difference. The downside of that is, we are, because our tax rate is already low, we're collecting, you know, far less in the revenue. But the question, it's a philosophical question. It's what do we want to accomplish? Are we looking at really incenting new business to come into an area that we've designated as either worthy or needing redevelopment? Or do we just kind of want, do we not think this is really going to work, and we think people are going to build there anyway, and are we reluctant to give back money that we would get because we know these businesses are coming? So I think we have to look at the two regions that we're talking about, the Northeast Triangle and the Midtown area. Now, the Northeast Triangle, I think we've been talking about redevelopment of that ever, well, at least since they put the direct access into Busch Gardens and probably before that. And one of the only areas we've been talking about significant redevelopment longer than that is the Williamsburg Shopping Center, which is in the Midtown area. So think about the potential if somebody came in and wanted to do a $300 million investment in a new complex that is the Williamsburg Shopping Center. We'd pay out, we'd pay back a whole lot of that tax money in that first year, but what does that do to the city's revenue over the next 20 years, or 50 years? And for somebody to invest $300 million in a shopping center, if they have to leave after five years, we've got other real problems that we need to deal with, and so does that developer. So I'm not necessarily advocating that we go to the 4,500 that both counties have done, but if you're an applicant, or if you're a prospective developer, and you're looking at this economic opportunity zone, and you could be on this side of the street or that side of the street, and this side of the street gives you a greater rebate on your taxes than that side of the street, how are you going to view that? And we could, Michelle and her team could sit down and go through all the math and explain why we want to keep those tax ratios proportionate, but to the person who's paying this money and undertaking the development, I'm not sure how meaningful that explanation's going to be at that point. So I just want to throw that out there for consideration. That's all.
Take this a little bit more, to a little bit more basic level. Ms. Newson's concern was that we'll bait them here and they'll, and leave. One reason I rest easy on that is because within the region, the city is high level of service at a low property tax rate and low water rate. I think that's, you know, that's the ultimate gift once this incentive would expire, you know? We're already a fertile place in the region. This is just an extra incentive, and I, it goes along with Paul's point, but I think because of, because we are who we are today, I think we're particularly well-suited for this to be a success, so, thanks.
Yeah, I don't have much to offer to that, but I think, you know, this ties right into the public hearings that we had about, you know, the zoning tax change to allow for opportunities to exist. This is kind of the additional carrots to help lure in those prospective developers. And I think Councilman Foster is correct. I think the type of things that really will come back to the city, and Vice Mayor Friling, you know, is that maybe that $300 million redevelopment of a shopping center. And to, I don't know, well, so, I think this is a good thing. And to, I don't know, well, so I think this is a good thing, and I don't need to repeat everything. It's already said.
Thanks, Judy.
To Mr. Friling's point, does it make any difference in the application, or could we change it? If we get the Enterprise Zone, could we then tinker around with the incentives?
Yes, you can change the incentives even after you've received the designation, as long as you're not lowering them. You can increase the incentives, but you can't go any lower.
One concern I would have about that, though, is a caveat, is what's the reaction? And do we get into a regional escalation? Oh, well, you've increased your benefit, now mine's going to be increased.
Yeah.
Whereas I think the starting point is important from that perspective.
Yeah, I think the starting point's important, but I think ultimately, the important thing about this program is it sends a signal to anyone looking at the city that we are serious about economic development. We are doing everything we can to attract people. And then back to Scott's points, we have superb services, low tax rate, low water rate. You know, we're open for business, and we're trying to help you succeed as a business. So I think, I think the signal that's sent is the critical part of this, probably more so than the details of the incentive packages. So I certainly favor this as well. At this point, I'll take a motion, or do you want to offer a amendment?
No, I mean, if council feels that the 33% rebate is the way to go, is that, as opposed to the 45?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that City Council adopt Resolution 13-10 authorizing, I just lost it, a Virginia Enterprise Zone application for 2014 designation.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Again, Michelle, I hope you'll convey our thanks to EDA for all the work that they did on this and to you as well. Thank you. This is, and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
Please do.
Thanks. Our next public hearing is the amendment to special events license to conduct Revolutionary City program, proposed Resolution 13-09. Jack?
Let me begin by just setting the stage for this. Since 2006, the city has provided for Colonial Williamsburg to conduct the Revolutionary City program on Duke of Gloucester Street by way of a special event license. That license was renewed a year ago for a five-year period, and that's the one we're operating under now. The foundation came to the city last month and requested that the existing license be amended in three ways. One is that the current hours now provides that the Revolutionary City can operate for a period of two and a half hours a day, and that can move anytime between 9:30 and 4:30 during the day with a two and a half hour period. The request is that consideration be given to expanding that period of time and setting it between 10:30 and 5:00 every day instead. The other change requested is geographic. Right now, the boundary of the Revolutionary City on the west side is Bartlett Street, but the request is that that be moved two blocks further to the west to Queen Street, which is adjacent to Tuning's Tavern. The period of time that this would operate remains under the current license, which is from 1 March until 23 December every year, so that remains unchanged. The foundation has requested that this expansion, both time and geographic, be done as a pilot program for a 60-day period, and that is come back to City Council at the August meeting to consider, should that be made permanent or revert back to as it has been. The, I think those are the essential points. Colonial Williamsburg is here, President Campbell, representatives of the foundation. And, oh, the other thing I wanted to mention, at the time council provided for the special event permanent process, it said that before those changes would be made, a public hearing would be held. So this is set up as and has been advertised as a public hearing before council goes forward with its discussion.
Are there any questions for Jack before I open the public hearing?
I'd just like to make one statement. As an employee of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, I will refrain from discussing this matter and abstain from voting on it.
Great, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. President Campbell is here from Colonial Williamsburg, and then I have some speakers' card, and then others who wish to address the matter may do so. President Campbell, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Holman, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this afternoon regarding our proposal to expand the foundation's popular Revolutionary City programming. I'm joined here by Diane Schwartz, Director of Historic Area Operations, and Tim Sutcliffe, Director of Revolutionary City. You and your colleagues who have previously served on the council have been very supportive of this program since it was first introduced, as the city manager said, in 2006, and we remain most grateful. As hoped and expected, the Revolutionary City experience has evolved since that introductory season in response to the comments of our guests. The newest iteration, which we plan to introduce next Monday, June 17th, reflects not only guest input, but also the foundation's strategic objectives of being recognized nationally as a center for history and citizenship and bringing new, larger, and more diverse audiences to Williamsburg. In the first six years, the Revolutionary City has engaged hundreds of thousands of guests in the stories covering the period just prior to and during the American Revolution, stories focusing on events here in Williamsburg. Based on comments directly to our staff, as well as on the high ratings the experience has received in guest satisfaction reports, they have loved it. They have made suggestions for improvements and have been very positive about the way the experience has evolved. And throughout this time, Revolutionary City has also received strong and favorable media attention. In a relatively short time span, it has become an important component of the Colonial Williamsburg brand. We know that efforts to attract new and larger audiences are essential. In a highly competitive environment, we must be constantly creative if we are to be successful. That's important to the future of the foundation, and it is important to the future of Williamsburg. Expanding Revolutionary City is the centerpiece of those efforts. We're determined that the experience be even more dynamic and engaging for our guests by injecting more life into the streets. We're convinced that that is what appeals to today's travelers. We often see them react viscerally to Revolutionary City stories. They're moved by them. They increasingly perceive Colonial Williamsburg as a relevant and engaging connection to our nation's past and the democratic values it represents. They want more, and we mean to provide it. The proposal before you today represents an innovative effort to engage history lovers, but also to appeal to new and larger audiences attracted by the opportunity to play an active role in reliving the dramatic times of the founding of our nation and to make the links between the 18th and the 21st centuries. The program will serve as the core onsite experience of our History and Citizenship Initiative by providing guests with an experience that is relevant to their lives today, that is authentic, that is inspirational, and that is fun. With your approval, an expanded version of the Revolutionary City will produce an even stronger sense of life within a revolution-charged 18th-century community. For instance, we will link taverns and shops more closely to the Revolutionary City stories, adding richness to the experience. We will remove many interpreters from the doorways where they have, to date, been obliged to check tickets and passes, locating them in the streets to interact with our guests as if they were friends and neighbors. Our objective is to recreate a lively, functioning community, a real community where daily activities and commerce are increasingly infused with the spirit of revolution. There will be major street theater events, such as angry colonists determined to storm the governor's palace with, and the reading of the Declaration of Independence, along with smaller scenes and spontaneous street encounters with 18th-century citizens. Under the proposed plan, these would go on throughout the day. We intend to create an authentic street scape as a backdrop to the dramatic events that unfold, from the collapse of the British regime to the emergence of a new republican society, our city at war, and the prelude to victory at Yorktown. Further contributing to the sense of action this summer will be the third episode of RevQuest, Save the Revolution. Entitled The Black Chambers, this alternate reality game will again be grounded in actual events and will incorporate technology into the experience through the use of both video and texting. RevQuest, as many of you know, has already been a big hit, and its popularity, not only with the young audiences, but with all their older siblings and parents, is most encouraging. Again, action and engagement, along with authenticity, are the key. We plan to launch the new Revolutionary City next week to coincide with the official beginning of the Colonial Williamsburg summer season. We want to use the next 60 days as a trial period, an opportunity to gather guest feedback and to address operational challenges that are bound to arise, to determine how we can best connect with our guests, to assure ourselves that we are effectively fulfilling our objectives for the guest experience and as a center for history and citizenship. To aid in this assessment process, we are undertaking a major consumer research initiative this summer. Guests will be interviewed during their visits to determine what aspects of the experience, including the Revolutionary City, of course, are engaging and what areas can be improved upon. Determining whether we are offering a positive and meaningful guest experience will be a critical metric for measuring the success of this program. We also hope and we expect that thousands of area residents will take advantage of the access provided by the Good Neighbor Program to determine for themselves whether we're heading in the right direction. In August, near the conclusion of the trial period, we will look forward to sharing our assessment with you and to discussing the future of the program. In order to implement these ambitious plans, we are requesting the expansion of the controlled access interval between the hours of 10:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., and the expansion of the licensed area on and adjacent to Duke of Gloucester Street bordered by the restored Capitol on the east to Queen Street and Tuning's Tavern on the west. We hope that the council will determine this request and the plans that drive it are worthy of your endorsement. And I thank you for your consideration. Please do answer any questions, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. Why don't we do the rest of the public hearing, and then if there are questions, if you, we can address them to you at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two speakers' cards dealing with this. The first is Billy Scruggs. Billy, welcome.
Mayor Holman, councilmembers, Billy Scruggs, 119 Woodmere Court. As the city manager was setting the stage, it dawned on me that, at that time, when it was first voted on, I was on that side of the dais, and I was just thinking some of the things that, I don't want to say frightened me, but concerned me at that time. We talked about nose under the tent. I was one of those. I remember Bill O'Donovan wrote an article probably more than once about we should wall off the city to keep all of these people that are walking up and down the street and not buying a ticket out. That worried me a great deal when I read that and I saw him say that. But to be honest with you, as the years have gone by, I'm proud and honored to say, at that time, I voted for RevCity, and I think that was a great decision of council and a great decision of Colonial Williamsburg to engage in that activity. I think it's certainly the, I'm fortunate to get to talk to very many visitors, and I have not had one that has not been excited about the program. So I am a proponent of the program. I think it's great to set the stage for what I'm going to say to you. Part of what I say, and as you all always know, I'm always emotional, but part of what I say, I begin to say from emotion, and in saying that, yeah, I have three things that I would like to address today. I want to address citizen access to city property. I want to mention commerce, and then I have a third thing I want to talk about that has to do with hotels. It's very easy for us to say, and many people say it to me all the time, we would not be what we are and who we are without our partner of Colonial Williamsburg. And I, that goes without saying. Who could, who could ever argue that? But I always try to remind people that we are partners with Colonial Williamsburg. Public Works, Water, Sewerage, Fire Police, Roads In, Roads Out, employees in the historic area, truly the community in Colonial Williamsburg, we are partner. And I, I don't think that either one of us could be without the other. I think it's a very holistic relationship. We have our property, they have their property, we have our assets, they have their assets. And it has been, where else has there been a relationship for 85, 90 years like this relationship that we have with them? With regard to, you know, property rights, here's where my motion comes in. 55 years ago, my mother pushed me down the Duke of Gloucester Street in a stroller. She had unrestricted access, city property. 35 years ago, we had to dodge cars back then, but 35 years ago, my first child and all of my children, we walked up and down the Duke of Gloucester. Now, my children come home, they cannot, we cannot be together that we don't walk down the Duke, as we all do. I'm concerned about the citizens of Williamsburg being able to access city property unrestricted. 2006, I suggested if you had a city, if your driver's license said you were a city resident, you should have access. It was intimated at that time that that could be the case. That is not the case. I have had the people that watch, and I have my Good Neighbor Card, of course, and I appreciate being able to have that. Point that I'm making is, I think that citizens of Williamsburg should have access to city In the resolution of 2006, and it recommends the same thing, College of Wiem and Mary students should have a college ID. They don't have to have a Friends and Neighbors Card. Not that that's a bad idea. Perhaps just a couple of suggestions, we could go get Friends and Neighbor Cards. A contribution would be acceptable. You would not have to pay for it. I can't imagine that Colonial Williamsburg's getting rich off the $10. I think that it's the best deal in the United States. I'm just saying, city property is city property. So I would suggest that we figure out some way that city residents can access that property. Commerce, I'm concerned about what effect it will have, not only on Colonial Williamsburg properties, people that are walking up and down the street now, whether or not, obviously, if they don't have a ticket, they can't go into whatever place is there to sell goods or services. But I'm also concerned because now the Duke of Gloucester is even more restricted, twice as much property, three times as long. People that are coming downtown, they come downtown, walk the Duke. Will that cause people to not come downtown? How are we going to know? It may be the impossible thing. Colonial Williamsburg may get a handle on that, but how might that be shared with us? Who would council talk to about that? I have council members I'm grateful that come to me and say, "How's business?" I don't know whether it will affect or not, but I think it's something that council, as stewards of this property, needs to think about. How would that happen? To wrap it up, this one, I'm a hotelier, as you all know. There have been times, I'm on the CW mailing list because I like to see what they do. As Michelle said, imitation's great, it's form of flattery. If they do it right, I like to see what they do. I get on their emails sometimes, come and stay with us for a number of nights, we'll give you free tickets to Colonial Williamsburg. I am told that the Colonial Williamsburg hotels pay for those tickets. Some of the deals that I see, though, it makes me wonder how much they pay. I want to make sure that if a hotel that is owned by Colonial Williamsburg and is a profit-making operation can buy a ticket and give it away, I think any other hotel in the city of Williamsburg should have the same opportunity. I would ask council if those tickets are being paid for when they give them away. Find out how much they are charging those hotels, and make sure that that's accessible to all of the hoteliers that pay taxes into the city. Just a suggestion. Finally, we are renewing a five-year contract, I understand. Because of these commerce questions, and again, because we are doubling the space, tripling the amount of tripling the amount of time, I think that it is certainly reasonable that council would ask for an annual review. Doesn't mean that, you know, it's going to go away, it doesn't mean anything else. Five years is a long time for you, my representative, to this property, your property, my property. Long time for me to give five years of unfettered, unrestricted access to property. What's going to happen in five years? So just a few suggestions and opportunities that I hope you all will consider.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next card I have is from Dick Schreiber.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dick Schreiber, president of Greater Williamsburg Chamber and Tourism Alliance. My purpose here is to speak on behalf of our membership in support of the expansion of the Revolutionary City boundaries and ours. When creation of the original boundaries was in front of you in two thousand six, we supported the proposal. The reasoning then was identical with our reasoning now. Colonial Williamsburg is the premier educational institution dealing with the formation of our country. Its work is important in spreading the values upon which our government is founded and on which we depend for our freedoms. The Revolutionary City is where visitors learn much of what Colonial Williamsburg has to teach. Through the establishment of this protected area in which visitors can participate in the process of learning that is so effectively provided, they leave here with knowledge they did not possess when they arrived. Children hear lessons from the past that they will carry into the future. Education takes place. It is that purpose that has established Colonial Williamsburg as the leader it is, and it is that educational effectiveness that has helped to ensure that the city's chief economic driver is able to put its best foot forward. Economically, it is vital for all of us, businesses and individuals, that this institution be given the opportunity to deliver its educational product through the means it considers best. In the long run, that is the factor that will ensure its economic vitality, and that vitality is critical to our local community. The alliance urges your support.
Thank you, Dick. If anyone else wishes to speak to this issue, please come forward and state your name and address. Tom, welcome.
Hi, I'm Tom Mayner, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm five oh six Newport Avenue, and I think I'm a reasonably longtime resident of the city. My wife was born here so many years ago, but I won't mention how many.
Smart man.
My granddaughter and I and our family has walked Duke of Gloucester Street for years, and we have walked it because it looks the way it does, because it's constantly been improved. We've walked it the way because it is such an enjoyable place to take our guests and our family members. We have happily gotten the Good Neighbor passes, and we've happily paid our contributions to Colonial Williamsburg Foundation every year because it is such a very special place. Our friends who have moved here have moved here because both of the college and of Colonial Williamsburg, and they have said repeatedly how lucky we were. Carly and I were walking down Duke of Gloucester Street not too long ago, and we had forgotten our Good Neighbor passes, and we couldn't get in to the Revolutionary City performance. She said, "I can go around." I said, "No, we'll come back and we'll do it again." We did because it's such an important gift, and it's a time machine. We walk into this town with a wonderful merchant square. That whole street has been closed off for a long time. In nineteen seventy-four, I ran for city council partly because they wanted to enclose Colonial Williamsburg. But the way that Colonial Williamsburg and the city and community flow in and out in the college and the students use it, it is such a special place. And I feel that what is being requested now is an opportunity for more people to enter that time machine, to have us emerge around them the kind of interpreters and the kind of performances that we've seen there. And I tried to get one of those interpreters off track one time. He was standing there pontificating about something just before Revolutionary City started, and I said, "By the way, is Mr. Jefferson in town?" He said, "Oh, no, he's not. He's out at Poplar Forest." You know, he didn't miss a beat. It's that kind of quality engagement with the Revolutionary City that people need to know, and we are delighted to encourage our friends and family who come to visit us to not only pay to get into Colonial Williamsburg, but to contribute to the foundation. This is a very special city, and we're very special in significant part because of what Colonial Williamsburg does and what they continue to do and improve. And I also just want to say a word about the virtual classroom. That kind of thing that we're exporting across the country is priceless, and we should be very grateful for what we share in and for what the foundation helps us provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this matter? Yes, please. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gabrielle Granger, and while I'm only eighteen, I am a lifelong resident of Williamsburg, and I have some comments to make about this. Colonial Williamsburg is an absolutely amazing foundation. It is extremely unique, and it helps make our city extremely unique. It's a treasure to this town, and I cannot imagine my city without Colonial Williamsburg and the historic area. I grew up taking field trips in Colonial Williamsburg and bringing my friends and family to Colonial Williamsburg when they came to town. Colonial Williamsburg has an amazing gift and talent for bringing history to life and making a person feel like they are part of their own history, because Colonial Williamsburg is their history. It's our own history. And I wish absolutely nothing but success for Colonial Williamsburg because the history they bring to life is, it's far too important to ever be forgotten. If the history of Colonial Williamsburg is forgotten, then kind of the history of freedom might as well be forgotten, because the history of freedom is the history that's being put on display in Colonial Williamsburg. And the freedoms that I'm referring to, such as the freedom to worship freely, the freedom to speak freely, print freely, but also the freedom to walk freely. And that freedom seems to be in question through this proposal. Duke of Gloucester Street is currently a public street and public property, and because it's public property, it belongs to the public and not a specific entity. And if it belongs to the public, why would a single entity be allowed to charge the public access to essentially their own property? On top of that, the local public already pays for this property once through their taxes. They pay to maintain it and such through that. And so through this proposal, you're essentially asking the local population to pay for their own property a second time. And also Colonial Williamsburg already consists of over one hundred acres of land, and not all of that is completely fully developed. For just a few examples, there's open green space behind the Capitol building, around the Powder Magazine, we've got the courthouse green and the palace green. What makes it so those properties aren't able to be used for Revolutionary City, which I believe is a great program? But if any of those, why instead of using those lands, is Colonial Williamsburg asking to use our land for their own show? And on top of that, they're not only asking to use it, they're asking, they're asking us to pay again. They're asking to charge the public that owns the land access to essentially their own land. And while I believe in what Colonial Williamsburg is trying to do with bringing history to life, as a matter of fact, I want to be a history teacher and try and bring history to life in my own way, and I absolutely love Colonial Williamsburg. But I have to request that you respect our founding fathers and the ideas of freedom and liberty that our country was founded on and deny this request to put public lands in private hands even for this amount of time for their financial gain. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to speak to this matter? If not, I'll come back, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for questions and discussion and action.
I get to talk first.
You get to talk first.
I'll preface my comments by saying that in three years on council, I've gotten more community feedback on this topic than any other topic in my short history here. I think it goes to show that Duke of Gloucester lies at the heart of this community, and, you know, when we're given the opportunity to tamper with it, we should tread lightly. My opinion, the Duke is the greatest main street in America, and it's our duty to see that the Duke and larger downtown remain a vibrant, welcoming, and above all, inclusive place. And that's for anyone who wants to be here, you know, or may find themselves here, whether you're a student, a tourist, or a local. Again, I think it's our prerogative to ensure that within that group, there will be people who are ticket holders and non-ticket holders. It's our prerogative to ensure that we maximize both those groups and that place is open and welcoming to both of them. My concern is that further restricting public access to Duke of Gloucester in either perception or in function will be discouraging those who choose not to buy a ticket from coming downtown at all. So I have several questions for Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell, in order for me to support this, I need some assurance and hopefully some, more than just hope as to that this change will not actively dissuade people from coming downtown altogether, that it doesn't make the entire downtown experience for both ticket holders and non-ticket holders less rich, less open.
Well, I'm sure that there will be differing views on that subject, but from my perspective, a portion of that street has been closed for a portion of the day for the last six years, and I see no evidence that that has had that kind of impact up to this point. And I think that's probably the best response to your point. I suspect that same concern was out there when they took cars off the street many decades ago, but I don't think there was any evidence of that either, that it had that impact. So from my perspective, it seems to me that what's in downtown is there for people. They will come there, they will enjoy it, they will take advantage of it, and that it doesn't make a difference to them that they can't walk on the Duke of Gloucester Street or that there's going to be Revolutionary City going on on the Duke of Gloucester Street for a portion of every day. I just don't see that, but you may see it differently.
So you would go as far to say that, you know, on the whole, downtown will be held equally, and it's your hope, be held equal, and it's your hope that will ultimately increase the total number of downtown visitors?
Well, that's the goal.
Sure.
The goal here is to attract new and larger audiences, and new and larger audiences will come downtown because they do. And so I think that is the likely benefit over the longer term, should this be successful. Now, we have to measure that question, and that's why we're going to do this very intensive research over this summer to see what people's response is to it. The best measurement we can have is really a measurement of guest satisfaction at this point, because satisfied guests leave here and tell other people they're satisfied, and that gets them to come here, and that's more effective than anything else can happen. It may not happen this summer, but I do believe it will happen over the longer term.
Okay.
So yes, I do.
Got you. So take me through the interaction where your casual tourist, non-ticket holder, once they get here, is going down Duke of Gloucester and comes into the roped-off section of the street. When they interact with your employee there, take me through that whole scene.
Yeah. There will not be a roped-off section. Start with that. The street will be open. There will be an indication at the beginning of the area, at Queen Street and Chowne's Tavern, that you're coming into the Revolutionary City and that a ticket is required. Period. And that's true, and the other streets that come into the Duke of Gloucester Street along the way. We are not intending to use our staff resources, which are limited, to spend time keeping people out who have read the sign, come down the street, seen that it's a ticket place, and decide that they're going to come in anyway. That's just not, I think, a useful approach for us to take. So there will not be ropes, and the interaction is likely to be, if staff person sees someone without a ticket, say, "You're in a ticketed area, you really should have a ticket." And if they say whatever they say, that's that.
Got you. So that will be a different than the regime today where you're actively stopped and checked for a ticket?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's talk a little bit about your, you know, when that person intersects, you know, with your employee that says, "You really ought to have a ticket."
Right.
What's their opportunity at that point to purchase a ticket?
Well, fortunately, that opportunity has gotten easier and easier. For the first time, we have put a ticket selling mechanism in the Dubois Roadster, which is halfway down the Duke of Gloucester Street from Chowne's. We have one at Greenhouse Door, but beginning next week, we will have handheld devices, and so people will be able to point to someone with a handheld device and say, "Could you sell this person a ticket?"
And this is just my personal opinion, this doesn't necessarily have anything to do with public policy, but right now, your regular tourist ticket is about forty dollars, correct?
That's right.
For day pass. I think that there's, I think, for everyday middle America, the ability just to walk down that street, you know, and that's how we'll be perceived, that it requires forty dollars, to me, I'm uncomfortable with that. So I know this is not pertinent to today, but in the future, for street access, I would like to see that be a different fee than your entire full-day pass or the entire museum collection. That's just a side note. Tell me a little bit about your consumer research study. Is that studying just your ticket holders, your hotel guests, or is that a survey of everybody that's on the street downtown?
Oh, it's a survey of the people on the street.
Okay.
And it'll be several times a week. It'll be direct intervention with iPad review, and it's going to be an intensive research effort.
Right. But it's comprehensive to everyone downtown?
No, you can't, they won't just be--
No distinction. No button holders?
No.
All right. I'll probably come up with some more. Go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I don't thank Mr. Campbell, but you're welcome to stay there. I don't know that I could speak any more eloquently than the three speakers spoke prior. I have gotten some phone calls from people who are very passionate about this. There is no question that Colonial Williamsburg and the foundation by far represent our largest employer, our largest taxpayer, and I think it's incumbent upon council to do all that we can to support Colonial Williamsburg and their initiatives to expand what it is that they do to the consumer. I think that's what a progressive organization, progressive company should be doing, and so I compliment you on that effort. And I've seen Revolutionary City, and I think it's a fabulous experience for the guests that tells an important story, undoubtedly. I think for years, I've made the argument that Colonial Williamsburg ought to do just this, limit access to paying customers. My thought was that if a guest had to pay, they're more likely to want to stay somewhere in town and maybe eat somewhere in town, and then there would be a residual benefit that the residents would see, other local businesses would see. This opportunity with this new application has afforded me the opportunity to listen to other people who have a different take on it and one that I think warrants some thought, and that is, since we've done Revolutionary City, and not all because of Revolutionary City, we've seen attendance decline, hotels, occupancies decline, meals are relatively flat in the city, and somewhat-- flat in the city, and some would argue that they're only flat slightly up because of price increase. Is there, and so some would conclude that there's a correlation between not being able to get into Colonial Williamsburg or getting free and full access, which impedes the ability for people to want to be in the area and thus may not come. Further impeding access to the Duke of Gloucester Street, I'm concerned would send the message to the world that you have to buy a ticket. And while $40 may not be a lot of money to some people, it's a lot to a lot of people in America. And as some of you know, I'm in the travel industry and been in the tourism business here in Williamsburg for a long time. Price, you know, people are price conscious. They are guests to come to Williamsburg who want to introduce history and introduce Colonial Williamsburg to their family, but may not be able to afford a ticket. But to be able to afford the opportunity to walk the streets, take in the experience, may be important to some families that can't afford to buy the ticket to take in the experience. And if those families in America learn that they have to buy the ticket, they may not even come. So then it starts to erode into other sales in the cities that could transpire, hotels and rooms and other sales tax collection, sales opportunities. And so when I'm not confident, so I think there's significant collateral damage that could happen beyond the benefit of what it might provide the organization itself. And so I'm struggling to reconcile with how this may benefit the few guests, hundreds of thousands over a period of time, that come and buy a ticket, and those that don't come, and how that may impact just the businesses around the historic area. If less people are coming into the area, is that less people that may shop at any one of the businesses in and around Merchant Square, eat at the restaurants in that area, if they're not allowed that opportunity? If they know that they can't just walk, you know, go get a nice sandwich at a world-famous place there, they can't eat their sandwich and walk the street, they may not come in to eat their sandwich. And so that, to me, is a huge detriment to this application, and I'm not sure I fully reconciled that. I don't, there's no question in that, that's merely my thought. You're standing there, if you'd like to respond, you may, but so with that, I'll pass to Judy for the moment.
Judy.
Colin, I don't really have any questions, so if you want to sit down. I do have some things to say, however. I think it's interesting, it's not that big a town, I've gotten almost no calls about this, almost, just a couple, almost none. So it's different, something's different. The other thing is, I think to talk about Rev City as the reason for the decline in tourism is perhaps pushing it just a little. I mean, tourism, it's the economy, it's not Revolutionary City, I don't think. The other thing is, I just got back from Disney not too long ago, we were in Orlando. Buying a ticket does not seem to stop anybody who wants to go to SeaWorld or Disney or Epcot, and the tickets are a whole lot more expensive down there to get the experience. A couple of things people said, this is not, we're not being asked for a five-year contract, we're being asked for a 60-day trial. This is just a short trial to see what happens. To answer Ms. Granger, we have been informed by the attorney that we can't do anything with Palace Green or Powder Mill Green or any of those, those are off the table for us, so that's not even an option. I found it interesting to listen to everybody talk about the intersection between 20th Century people walking around and the colonial city, and to me, that's what makes this such a strong place. I have been in what I consider made-up colonial places where they are walled off, you can't get in. And one of the strengths of Colonial Williamsburg, it seems to me, is the fact that we do have this interaction. But Rev City has made that interaction stronger, and the new proposal, I like the idea of getting the costume interpreters out of those doorways into the street to talk to people. I think that's going to make it a much more interesting experience, a much better experience. And to talk about our tax money, it, tax money goes for lots of things, and in fact, Colonial Williamsburg is the biggest taxpayer in the city, so they are in fact paying for those streets as much as, more than I am paying for those streets. I really think this is very important for Colonial Williamsburg. They wouldn't be here asking us to do this if they didn't think it was important, they didn't think it was going to help. I think it is only right that we give the largest taxpayer, the largest business in the city, a mere 60-day opportunity to try this. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. If it works, it'll be wonderful. What's the harm in a 60-day trial? I think it's, I think it's, it would be wrong not to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Over spring break, we had some friends come visit with a nine-year-old and 12-year-old daughters. They were here a couple of days, and we had them to dinner. Those two young ladies could not stop talking about Rev City and Rev Quest. I mean, it was just electric, the way they talked about it. So, you know, that's the kind of experience that makes a difference, and that's the kind of experience that brings people back here over and over and over again. I will follow up on Judy's point, that this is a request for a 60-day trial period, and I think that's important to keep in mind. We are not making this permanent. If it, you know, at the end of the 60 days, Colonial Williamsburg will have to come back to us. I expect them to have a fair amount of information, I expect us to have done some research on what impact these 60 days have had on business revenues for the city. And at that point, we'll go through this process again. So I think that giving that opportunity is important. I guess, President Campbell, I do have a couple of questions for you, if I could. The question of access and means of access has come up, and it was good to hear about the card swipe things, that really makes it much easier. But for local residents, I'm wondering, is, are you contemplating other means beside the Good Neighbor Pass of local residents having access to this? Is that something you've thought about experimenting with during this time period or not?
We have not thought about experimenting with that during this time period, but we are certainly prepared to, during this time period, consider options based on the experience.
Okay. Thank you. Several. Mr. Scruggs asked the question about your hotels are able to buy passes. Is that available to hotels across the community, or are you contemplating that possibility?
There is a discount for our own hotel purchases of tickets, but we haven't really thought about that issue either, as something that we ought to be considering. And we are looking at everything in our whole ticketing process right now, and will continue to, we must in these times, and that suggestion is one that I've just heard today, and we'll certainly take it under advisement.
So this 60-day experiment could include ticketing options as well?
It could.
Thank you.
In fact, it will.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. I think that answers my question. I'll come back, yeah?
Yeah. Pilot program. Given that this is a pilot programming, program, might you consider doing it at a time of the year when the risk may not be so great? You know, given that summertime is our legitimate, is our biggest event of the year, that's when mom and dad and the families are on vacation. That's the best opportunity we have to capture as many guests as we can. According, in my mind, there's potential for collateral damage in doing this. Why don't we try the pilot program when the risk isn't so great, such as the fall?
I guess our view would be just the opposite, that this is the time, because it is the biggest time, to see if it works. This is a whole new program, bringing people into the streets, creating a sense of action, and we want to have the maximum number of people visiting us at this time to see how it works with them. So I think, frankly, from a trial point of view, you'll get a much better reading now than you would at some other less busy time of the year. I don't think that would tell us nearly as much.
Sure. And I just want to also go back to, I wasn't saying that the single reason this town is down, that tourism's down in town, is because of the Rev City. There's lots of factors, why we are facing the challenges we are. But the fact remains to me that lots of other destinations who have a whole lot less than we have in terms of draws have rebounded, and we haven't been able to do that. And so as I would think back to the days when the town was packed, Colonial Williamsburg was packed, and we were growing and expanding, we had free and open access, and I think there is a slight correlation.
Oh, thank you. I have a question for the city attorney. If we were to approve this 60-day trial, what happens in August at the end of the 60 days? Would they have to come back for?
Yes.
And at that--
Go ahead.
And at that point, you know, again, they would be applying for, you know--
They would be applying for a further extension of it--
Extension, okay.
--over some period of time, there would be another hearing on it.
And if city council wished at that time to have sort of an annual review or report, that could be made part of that?
That could be made part of--
And I guess, and I'm sorry, Scott, you had-- One of the sticking points for me here is, Rev Quest has gone on since 2006, yet this proposal has no data, no objective information, or even subjective projections about what they hope this to become. Essentially, we've been presented with that the people that buy the ticket like it. That's not enough for me to do my due diligence to be sure that the city will be held at minimum equal, given this, you know, expanded regime. You know, I understand that after 60 days, they can give us a read on how it worked today, but there's been six years, yet there's nothing, no hard fact of any kind in this proposal that says, this is where, you know, this is why we think this. I just, this is not, this is not something I feel comfortable hanging my hat on.
Anyone else?
Maybe they haven't done the kind of surveying that they're going to do now.
I'm, survey would be great, but I'm even talking about cooperation with the city to pull some tax revenues from, in a certain geographical area over that time. I mean, there's 100 ways, I mean, not 100 ways, I can think of two or three ways that we could have at least had something to stick to here.
If I could, I mean, the amount of analysis we have on how the economy is doing is considerable, lots of different measures, what we can never do, whether it regards Revolutionary City or any other change, is say, what over the period of time, what it had been if we had not done this, because it's the problem with social research. You can get lots of data, but you can't get that clear point of where the evidence says this factor made this difference.
Sure.
And so that request, in a sense, is impossible, Scott, for anyone to do.
But I don't think it's impossible to at least to have had the data presented for that time period relative to a previous time period. I mean, you're right, you're never going to be able to attribute it to one thing.
First, we all know that we had considerable 2007, 2008, where it looked like it was going great, and then the bottom dropped out. So we know that going great wasn't all about Rev City, and we know the bottom dropping out wasn't about Rev City. We know what happened, but we can't tie it back. The same problem we have with our advertising. We cannot make that hard link between what advertising is done and what the outcome is, and it's just, it's frustrating, because I'd love to see that, too.
Well, and I think, to that point, I think it's incumbent upon council, not just for this applicant, application, but we need to figure out how we are going to measure these types of activities, how we're going to measure success in tourism. As some, as the foundation and the alliance know, over the last couple of years, I've asked how we should hold you accountable, and I think one of the responses was ticket sales. We need to see growth in our primary industry of tourism, and every other destination in America measures that by overnight visitation, and we don't even do that here.
They measure it by ticket sales.
Okay, so if we're going to use ticket sales, let's look what's happened to ticket sales since 2008. Bottom dropped out, it's been flat to down, unless somebody else told me otherwise. There's an indication that this hasn't had an overall, the experience for the consumer is much better, I won't doubt that, but it hasn't brought more people to town. It hasn't lifted all of the city's businesses in a way that, to me, justifies closing the public street.
And let me go ahead and say that, were that data available? I would be your biggest cheerleader. I mean, this, I would have, this would have flown through without any discussion, because it would have justified the risk. Don't, I don't have enough today to justify that risk.
What risk? What's the risk?
Well, that we may ultimately make downtown less attractive for the every visitor, both the ticket holders and non-ticket holders.
I can't believe, I have a hard time believing that somebody who wants to come shop in Merchant Square is going to say, "Oh, I don't think I'm going to come shop in Merchant Square because a mile and a half away, Duke of Gloucester Street's closed." It's not even closed, they're having Rev City. I mean, those two things seem to me to be so disconnected that anyone that says, if they have Revolutionary City operating a mile and a half away from downtown Williamsburg, my likelihood of going to downtown Williamsburg is going to be less. I find that a spurious connection at best.
Well, not to debate you point for point, but it's only maybe a quarter of a mile from the Merchant Square downtown area. And I think to this point, if we're going to communicate to the population that you have limited to no access, it is a detriment. And I think it kind of flies afoul of what we're trying to do in the downtown area with the comp plan and looking for redevelopment, and bringing more people to the area who don't have a ticket, who don't want to buy a ticket, who don't have a Red, have a Good Neighbor's Pass. And so to me, if we start creating the notion or sending the message that there's limited access, it starts to grow, and it'll start to--
But we've had limited access, you know, this extends it by two very short blocks. And again, there are, the vast majority of the historic area is still open, you can walk down, you can go in, you can go to the palace, you can see the palace, you can go in Bruton Parish Church, you can go to the Powder Magazine. I mean, all of that is still perfectly accessible to anybody at any time. This does not impact that accessibility in any way whatsoever.
And I'll point out that where that, in my opinion, came from, is only through talking to the public. I mean, that's the response I've been getting. And this, you know, it's highly scientific, but--
But who's the public? I mean, is it, is it people who moved here five years ago and think it's their God-given right to walk down the street?
This is anyone from, someone who's lived here their whole life, to someone who is as new a resident as could be. So this is, I mean, I would say in the last two weeks, it's been between 15 and 20 people that I've talked to.
But even what Mr. Campbell said, Mr. Ponce talks about cutting off access, in fact, it's going to be more open than it is now?
If you're willing to overrule the pressure of being told that you need to have a ticket to be here. It's, I agree that it's a softer entry, I'll see that.
It's a softer entry, and I think if Colonial Williamsburg during this pilot is willing to explore other options, particularly for local citizens, that seems to be to be something that makes this justifiable as a 60-day trial.
Because that's the other thing we should check. I mean, Colonial Williamsburg people have tickets, wear them on their, you know, they have a little lanyard or whatever. I keep my Good Neighbor Pass in my wallet, so, you know, it's not going to be obvious if I walk in there that I shouldn't be there. I just, I really don't see the risk, and I really-- I just, I really don't see the risk, and I really think for 60 days, it's worth it. I really do. Even without a whole lot of data to back it up?
Yeah, I agree. I think the risk is minimal, and the potential payoff is so much larger that it justifies taking whatever risk is there. And I don't think the risk is very high at all. And I think the potential payoff, because this really is a transformation, a further transformation of the way Colonial Williamsburg works with educating the public about this place and the beginnings of this nation. And that is an experience that we hope everyone in this country can, will come to Williamsburg and will go away saying, wow, I need to tell my friends about it, and I need to come back. And I think giving them the opportunity to do this is critical at this time for the future of tourism in our community.
I agree.
Mr. Campbell, if you'd humor me one more time. I, what kind of, I know you've spoken to this, about this comprehensive consumer research initiative. What kind of, I'm not asking what will the results be, what kind of results are we, will you be able to provide us in 60 days?
We'll be able to tell you what a very substantial number of our visitors felt about the experience over the summer. And one of the reasons we want to do this over the summer is because we have so many people here, we can get a much better feel for it than perhaps at other times of the year. So we'll be able to tell you what they thought of the experience, and it will be refined so that we will be able to say what they thought about the Revolutionary City programming. And if they thought that there was a concern about access, we'll be able to tell you that as well. Because they're, the questions that will be, you know, open-ended, people will have a chance to say what they think and feel. And this is going to be several times every week for the next couple of months. So I think we're going to have a very good set of data at the end of it that will be useful for us to have a conversation about here at that point.
You mentioned that you all have your programming planned to start next week, or this weekend or next week?
Monday.
Monday. What happens if you don't get this permit today?
Well, we're going to go forward and do the new Revolutionary City, because we believe it's right. We believe it's the way to attract larger audiences and new audiences to Williamsburg. And we have to keep in mind that that's what we're trying to do here. So our goal is exactly the same as the goal of concerns that you've expressed. We would not be here talking about doing this if we thought the result would be to have fewer people come to Williamsburg, or to come to Colonial Williamsburg. That wouldn't make any sense whatsoever. So the reason that we're doing this is to get more people here. And we're determined that that will happen. Now, if we are not able to at least have a situation where we're putting up the signs saying you're coming into the Revolutionary City, a ticket required, the soft, I think is a very good term that you used, a soft entry, then we probably will have to adjust how we assign some of our staff, and it won't be what it could have been. And I think that would be terribly unfortunate. Because you won't know the answer to the questions you're asking if we aren't able to do what we want, what we-
We won't have as good a result. Correct.
And I almost thought I heard you say that you would continue, if you don't get the approval, you'll have to continue with the program regardless. But I think when you concluded to say there will be some changes because you won't be able to pull the people out.
The basic program, excuse me.
Well, and so, why go through this permit? Why not do the program, maybe keep some of the people, you know, some of your employees in the stores where they need to be, and just maybe modify it a little bit, and allow the public to see Rev City for 30, 60 days, or 90 days, and see how that goes.
Well, I think that frankly, the reason is we want to try to see if we can do it the very best way we believe. And we have a lot of professional people on our staff who have thought about this for a long time, who have worked it through, who have the plans. And asking them to adjust those plans at this point is something, you know, we'd rather not do. But we are going to a single-day Revolutionary City under any circumstances. It's a two-day program now, as you know. Guest input and our own view about how it can best convey its message is to do it in one day. We will go forward with that. We will go forward with the three major events during the day. We will go forward with some of the stories that are being told during the rest of the day, but we will have to make modifications. And what those modifications are, frankly, I can't tell you right now. I don't know if either of you want to comment on that, but-
It would also, excuse me, it would also-
Could you please come to the mic?
This is Tim Sutton, the director of Revolutionary City.
It would, one of the impacts would be there would be less lively interactions on the street, those in-the-moment sort of experiences that our guests have during that hour managed access that they currently have now.
Describe that. What do you-
Alexander Purdy, walking down the street, publisher of the Virginia Gazette. He may not be able to be on the street if we don't have, if we don't do the full experience at that time. Where, right now, in that hour, hour and a half experience that we are doing right now in managed access, they would, they would experience, they would interact with Alexander Purdy, get his perspective on the activities that are happening, the time of the 18th century that we're experiencing.
Because if you don't have managed access, he will be somewhere else?
He will be somebody else. It's possible, yes.
I mean, part of it might be, you know, yes, they could operate with a constrained new Revolutionary City, but, you know, why not give the opportunity to do the full-blown, you know, and best possible experience for the visitor, and see what that does? It seems to me that's a better test than to do, you know, do the new Revolutionary City in a much more constrained, because again, you still have the permit to do Revolutionary City that continues on.
But it's not only the amount of space, it's the amount of time.
Right.
I mean, I think we got a little hung up on the space. It's also the time, which allows much broader programming, it seems to me, the kind of time.
Mayor Holman, one of the things that you talked about was measured results. What would you propose at the conclusion of this, if this were approved? What would be some of the measured results that we would realistically like to see?
Well, I think we could sit down with the city manager and the finance director and take a look at sort of what measures of revenue coming to the city we could look at, and look at this time period compared to other time periods. The problem with that is the, is the basic problem that Jack's talked about, the counterfactual. You don't know what it would have been without this. But you can certainly make those comparisons, and then, then you have to figure out the attribution of sort of where they came from. But certainly, we have the data to do all of that, and that's, you know, we collect that every month, and we can focus it in many ways. And I would suggest we sit down with the city manager and the finance director and actually sort of construct a data set. Now, what that's going to tell us and how much we can attribute any changes there to Revolutionary City is debatable and questionable, but certainly, I think having the data would be very useful.
Ms. Newton smartly pointed out that they measure results in ticket sales. Might that be one?
That's, I assume that not only is Colonial Williamsburg, if this were approved and they come back in August, not only will they bring the results of their surveys, they will bring the results of the number of ticket sales that accrue. I hope, I'm assuming that, I would guess that would be correct.
Generally, my experience is generally, we don't know ticket sales until the end of the year. I mean, would you be prepared to come back to show us maybe on a monthly basis how, from June, a period of June, compared to previous June and July, compared to previous July, have ticket sales increased or decreased?
And that wouldn't even have to be raw numbers, that could be percentage changes.
We certainly understand that when you're doing a trial, there are measurements that you wouldn't normally sort of lay out every month that you have to lay out. I would have no problem with that.
Any further questions before we-
I think if, you know-
Thank you.
If I'm demanding this data, and, you know, I need to give them the legitimate shot to get it. And knowing that in 60 days, we're going to come back with a full slate of real information, and, you know, some things we can really stick this to.
Well, but you got to be careful. You can have the data, but what you can, how, what you can say caused the data to change is extremely difficult, and many things can go on between now and then, in addition to Rev City. So you can have the data, but, you know, determining sort of causality is a basic problem, and you need to be aware of that.
We'll have a lot more tools-
Yes, we will.
-with which to evaluate by that time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further comments? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the approval of proposed Resolution 13-09, an amendment to special events license to conduct a Revolutionary City program.
I have a second. If not, I'll second it. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Newton?
Hi.
Mr. Ponce?
No.
Mayor Holman?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
I'm staying.
And Mr. Foster?
Ah.
Thank you. It was a good discussion, and I think we have our work cut out for us. And thank you, Mr. Campbell, and all the people from Colonial Williamsburg. We appreciate this, and we look forward to seeing you in 60 days or so, and with some results, and we'll do our part to have results as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our final public hearing today is an easement to convey to James City County Service Authority some properties. Jack?
City engineer Aaron Small will give this report.
Aaron, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members. For those that I haven't had a chance to meet, again, my name is Aaron Small. I am the new city engineer in the Department of Public Works and Utilities. Let's see if we can bring this up here. Before you today is a request from the James City Service Authority and the county for an easement on city properties located at 97 and 99 Patrick Henry Drive and Skipworth Farms. These two properties currently house sewage pump station number seven, and is shown in the red area on the map. The easement is for a two-and-a-half-inch sewage force main, which will convey sewage from the Service Authority, from the James City County Recreation Center over on Long Hill Road, to a James City County JCSA gravity sewer that runs along the swamp bottom just to the north of sewage pump station number seven. The Red Center is currently served by a small pump station that pumps directly into the HRSD force main, which are shown in green along Long Hill Road. But it's been experiencing many problems due to varying pressures. To solve the issues with these pumps and to provide a more stable pressure, the Service Authority and the county have elected to reroute the force main to a gravity discharge. And the closest JCSA gravity sewer is just within the city limits along Patrick Henry Drive. The route chosen currently coincides with an existing, there's a small water line that runs from Long Hill Road up to Patrick Henry Drive, and also the HRSD force main that passes through the city also lies along this alignment. The proposed two-and-a-half-inch force main will cross one city property owner, cross Patrick Henry Drive, then the city properties for the pump station, and finally, discharging into the manhole located on Common Area for Savannah Green. This slide shows a copy of the annotated plat for the property. The easement being requested is a 15-foot-wide area on the west side of the pump station lot. The proposed easement coincides with a 15-foot HRSD easement, so this is not really a new encumbrance on the property. The city attorney's office has reviewed a draft of the plat and the deed of easement, and my office has reviewed the construction plans and provided some minor comments. Therefore, we recommend that the council authorize the city manager to execute the deed of easement and accompanying plat conveying a 15-foot-wide easement to James City Service Authority for placement of this two-and-a-half-inch sanitary sewer force main. I have with me today Mr. Daryl Cook from James City County, and either of us would be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions before I open the public hearing?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mr. Small, can you just talk a little bit about the path that this is following along the existing force main and the water line?
Yes, sir.
And there's a pre-existing easement here along the large piece of property that runs behind the residential units just off of Long Hill?
Yes, sir. It's about a 30-foot easement, I believe.
And so it's just that one, and that's, so that's not on any of those people's property?
No, that easement is actually just outside the city limits. The backside of their property line is the county and city line.
So it's this first house right here on Patrick Henry?
That's correct, the first house across the street.
And there's an existing easement across that property?
Hmm?
There's an existing easement across that-
There is an existing easement there. And just to clarify how they're planning on installing this, they are actually planning a horizontal directional bore from outside the city limits on the larger parcel, and they're going to bore underneath that property so that they don't disturb much of the vegetation along there. And then they're also going to go completely under Patrick Henry Drive, so there won't be any pavement disturbance as well. And they'll surface somewhere on the pump station lot, just past some Virginia Power facilities, and then they'll trench the rest of the way across our pump station lot.
Okay, thank you.
Scott? Thank you very much. Good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing anyone, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
I would just make one comment, to the degree that it's reasonable and possible that the city, assuming this is approved, work in concert with that property owner on Patrick Henry Drive to make sure that their experience is, not as, the least disruption possible happens to their property. And that's not really a part of this, except that it's connected to it, so.
Yeah, and I think during the pouring really minimizes any impact, so that's important. But it is important both for notification and so the property owner knows what's going on and when, and what have you, is terribly important. Anything else?
No, and to me, this is kind of a no foul, no harm thing, and if we can work to help alleviate some problems for our neighbors, I think it's, we ought to do this.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion.
I move the council authorize the city manager to execute the deed of easement, utility easement, and accompanying plat conveying a 15-foot-wide easement to James City Service Authority for placement of a two-and-a-half-inch sanitary sewer force main.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Newton?
Hi.
Mr. Ponce?
Hi.
Mayor Holman?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Hi.
Mr. Foster?
Ah.
Okay. Public hearings are out of the way. That brings us to the next agenda. The first of those, is a financial statement, Jack, anything in particular?
Well, just picking up our discussion last month, where we were looking at a good month of March, and we now have the April data, and as we were expecting, April was down because Easter not in it, the number of weekends and so forth. Although, if you take, looking on page five, if you take room tax, for instance, in March and April together, we're still plus 0.29% over where we were last year, given the good performance in March and the not-so-good performance in April. Same thing on meal tax, you take those two together, and it's about a plus 1.5%. So, at any rate, it's positive, but just barely positive. That's where we are.
Any questions? Monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
Nothing in particular to point out.
And any questions? And any questions for operating reports? Next is city manager reports, and we have three. The first of those is the supplemental appropriations and transfers for general fund, sales tax fund and law enforcement block grant funds.
Finance Director Phil Serra will do the report.
Phil, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Holman and members of city council. You have before you Resolution Number 13-08. It's a resolution which amends three of the city's funds. The majority of this resolution pertains to supplemental appropriations involving grant funds. These are grants that were received during the year that were not budgeted. They're specific in nature and I'll briefly go through those in a minute. The other is for a budget transfer from the healthcare contingency, and I'll also speak on that when I get to that. But regarding the general fund, the grants, briefly, a VML safety grant came in at just under $4,000. It's used for an infrared camera to help identify energy loss in city buildings. There was a Dominion power grant, $2,500. It was used for Waller Park improvements and a few things over there regarding programs at Waller Mill. And there was also a DMV grant, $7,401. Those were for overtime costs associated with additional enforcement around the city. There was also a FEMA grant, funny, it's in the exact same amount, $7,401, as the DMV grant, and that was used for reimbursing overtime costs, I believe, for city drills in Hurricane Sandy deployments. Also in the general fund, as I said, there was a transfer that we're requesting, $25,000 be taken from the healthcare contingency to the general contingency specifically to be used to assist with James City County's legal expenses in opposing construction of the power lines over the James River. In the sales tax fund, the CIP fund, there were two grants there. There was a FEMA grant of assistance to firefighters for $44,000. It was used for a compressor. Also, the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation gave us a grant, $19,502, which the fire department purchased an AMS all-terrain response vehicle. And the smaller fund here that we deal with is the law enforcement block grant fund. We don't budget anything in that when we do the budget because we don't know of any grants certainly that come in for that fund. Did have two come in, a $2,680 police grant used for gym exercise equipment, and then there was also the capital side of the selective enforcement grant from DMV of $6,600, used to buy preliminary breath tester, radar unit and an LED light which illuminated checkpoints. So, but that's all I have for this. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Phil. I'll come to council for any questions.
I do have a question, but it's not really related to, it's, this maybe is, I guess for the city manager, with the purchase of the infrared camera to help identify energy loss in city buildings, is that used regularly? Is it the type of thing that we try a couple of times a year at different seasons to see whether we have heat or cooling loss? The reason why I ask the question is, I'm assuming somebody's not out there with this camera every day, every week, trying to identify if we have energy loss in the buildings. But I also wonder with a tool that costs $4,000 and it's not the type of thing that everybody can afford, is there a way for the green team to consider whether or not this could be set up for use by other entities to evaluate their own properties and possibly make some adjustments?
If there was interest in that, yes. Loan it out and let other entities use it, I think we could do that. This particularly came from the VML insurance programs back to the cities to assist with our attempting to find energy loss in city buildings and so, but you're right, it's a piece of equipment that's just going to sit there more than it's going to be actively used, it won't be used every day. So if there were other nonprofit agencies in particular or entities such as that that is interested in borrowing it, if I'm over speaking, the staff will quickly let me know tomorrow if I'm causing problems I don't know about. But certainly, if it can be used in the community to a greater degree, then we can use it, we'd like to do that.
I think of the schools as an example, if there's a way to utilize it there.
It's a good thought.
That was it.
Scott?
Yeah.
Again, I'll say, you know, along the lines with the enterprise zone application, regional cooperation, I think our efforts to help James City County in their legal efforts, I think, while it's not a great amount of money, it certainly says we're there and we stand with them in this, and I think that's important, so, thank you. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council approve proposed Resolution 13-08, amending the general fund and sales tax fund budgets for the city of Williamsburg, Virginia for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman? Aye.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Next agenda item is an amendment to the agreement to include York County in the Williamsburg Regional Library. And before I go there, I'll recognize the three city members, or three of the city members of the library board that are here. We really appreciate you being here. Yes, I guess all four are here, right? I can't, I can't see me on the floor, yes, okay. So the city board members, we really do appreciate your efforts and work and also Mr. Mormon, the director of the library, thank you for being here as well.
This is to, for city approval of an amended agreement for the operation of the library. As you know, we've had an interlocal agreement that establishes the regional library since 1977. This will be the fifth amendment to that agreement. It is significant because this will formally include York County as a partner with James City County and Williamsburg in the regional library. It provides for the constitution of the board with the new partner. It provides for the shared amount both of revenue to the library of city and county revenue as well as services to be received, and there's a formula in the agreement that explains that. So I call this the John Mormon Memorial Amendment to the Library Agreement, because John has worked long and hard to get us to the point that York is now fully part of the, fully part of the venture and it really is a great achievement on the part of our library to pull all this together.
It is.
You do have our admiration and condolences both. I'll come to council for any questions.
Out of concern for Mr. Mormon's health and well-being, can we call it the John Mormon honorary? I just, I, this is terrific. It's taken, it's taking what has been a longstanding but somewhat informal relationship and formalizing it in a way that allows the library to better serve all the residents of the region and it also ensures a degree of funding that's going to help the library continue to do the terrific work that they do in a way that we haven't had before. And I thank everybody who is involved with this because, and our friends in York County. I mean, they have to be obviously as big a part of this as anybody and another terrific example of how the growth and cooperation that you just cited a moment ago about the power line issue with James City County. So I think it's terrific.
Scott?
Excellent, only enhancing one of our greatest city assets. Thank you.
I concur. Nice work.
This has been a very long time. My very first civic thing in this area was being on the library board 20 years ago, 25 years ago, something like that, and we've been working on this for a long time and it's great.
Judy, would you like to make a motion?
I would be delighted to make a motion. I'd like to move that city council approve the Fifth Amendment amended and restated contract for the Williamsburg Regional Library to include York County with James City County and the city of Williamsburg as signatories to the agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Final city manager report is the Williamsburg redevelopment housing authority property acquisition request for 743 Scotland Street.
Assistant city manager Jody Miller will give this report.
Good afternoon, mayor, members of council. This is a follow-up for the action that the board took on Monday, the Williamsburg redevelopment Housing Authority Board for the purchase of 743 Scotland Street. In order for that purchase to move forward, the city council needs to take action to fund the purchase of this property. So it is the recommendation that council authorize a zero-interest loan not to exceed that $115,000 that we talked about on our Monday meeting for the acquisition of 743 Scotland Street property.
Any questions at this point?
I do just have one question. I don't know if it's an iPad issue, but the material that I have still shows the number of 105,000.
We, that's not an iPad issue. We did not change the original memo that went out a week ago today.
Okay.
The newer information we received and briefed you on on Monday is the 115, but the memo has remained unchanged, so that's the reason.
So a motion has to change that amount?
The motion should state 115 rather than 105, yes, sir.
Any questions? If not, I'll.
Well, I just want to, you know, I think what we're, what there's, this was all discussed at Monday's meeting, but I think in doing this, we're not trying to get into the real estate business and I think it's the intention of the housing authority to put this house to use in a way that might help a city employee, for example, earn some homeownership or get it back onto the market, clear of any encumbrances. That wouldn't necessarily happen without going through, the current owner going through a bankruptcy. And so I think what we're doing is expediting a, this situation into a good situation where we can return the house to the market in a way that would help, you know, somebody buy it.
And we're also helping to protect that second lien that's held by the housing authority on this property that is vulnerable if we don't take this action.
Okay. With that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council, well, I'm sorry. I'm reading the recommendation.
It says housing authority, doesn't it?
You want to do it?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move the city council authorizes their interest loan not to exceed $115,000 for the acquisition of 743 Scotland Street.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Aye.
Jody, thank you very much for all your work on this. City attorney reports, I think we.
None that I know of.
It's nice to see you sitting in that.
Well, it's nice to be here.
Brings back lots of memories.
I hadn't expected to do this, but I guess I have to.
We're pleased to have you here. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
We do have new business. Mr. Mayor, I move that city council appoint Todd Beradian to the Economic Development Authority Board for a four-year term effective July 1, 2013, to expire June 30, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
That brings us to our final agenda item for the day, which is the open forum, a time when anyone who wishes to address council on any matter may do so. If you wish, please come forward, state your name and address. Mr. Whitley, welcome.
Mayor Holman, members of council, I'm John Whitley, 110 Governor Berkeley Road. This has been a red-letter day for council. I commend the newly, the most newly elected members for standing tall and exercising their voices. I commend Dr. Mormon for his leadership for the library. In just seven days, you will have before you some folk who will present proposals for the Stryker Center Complex. I think I'm right, the 20th. And you will be talking to them about their ideas and how they interpret our city and how what they are proposing to you will be the entity that can enhance the future of the city. And hopefully, as you listen to each of them, you will think beyond what they're saying. To look at the Stryker Center Complex is, and I think there's a song that says, "Is this all there is?" As you look at each proposal, think beyond and to see if this really is where we want to be or where do we need to go. Let your beliefs in the city be the guidance to you as to what you, what you really see needs to be there. This economic liability, this economic strength, you know, the potential of the Century Art Gallery, there are a whole bunch of things that are happening right here and we're right at that moment of being able to make a decision that will really impact the future of our city. Don't feel that, please don't feel that you have to do anything other than to say we're going to do the correct thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitley. Anyone else wish to speak? No, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Knutson?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Frumlin?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.